Good evening. Welcome everyone to tonight's election forum with candidates for the Columbia School Board and 45th District House Seat. My name is Lauren Williams, Adult and Community Services Manager at the Columbia Public Library, which is part of the Daniel Boone Regional Library System. We are glad to be co-hosting tonight's forum along with the League of Women Voters of Columbia Boone County. A bit of Zoom housekeeping before we get begin. If you have questions for our candidates tonight, we ask that you use Zoom's chat feature. So if you hover at the bottom of your screen, you should see the chat icon. And if you're on a smartphone or a tablet, you may have to tap in the middle of your screen to get those features to come up. Click on the chat bubble there and you can type your question for our candidates. Barbara Hoppy, who is a League of Women Voters Board Member, will serve as the moderator for tonight's candidate forum. So thank you Barbara, I'll turn things over to you.
Thank you. The League of Women Voters welcomes you to tonight's Zoom candidate forum for the Columbia School Board and for a state representative for the 45th District. I am Barbara Hoppy and I am your moderator and I'm on the League Board. Thanks to Lauren Williams and the Columbia Public Library for cosponsoring and hosting this Zoom forum. The first part of our forum will include the candidates for the Columbia School Board. The school board has seven members. The board members receive no remuneration. Columbia Public Schools has over 18,500 students, four high schools, six middle schools, 21 elementary schools, and a career center. Tonight, we have five candidates for two seats on the school board. The candidates are Teresa Malidi, Luke Neal, Erin Saylor, Catherine Sasser, and Jeannie Snodgrass. Voters can vote for only two candidates. The school board candidates will each have two minutes for an opening statement. Then I will ask questions from the League and we will also take chat questions. And each candidate will have one minute to answer the question and we will rotate who goes first for those questions. Following the questions, the candidates will present one-minute closing statements. And opening statements will be presented in ballot order. I will also have a little card to indicate when there's 10 seconds left and another card to indicate when time has expired. And with that, we will go to opening statements. At this time, Teresa Malidi, you may present your opening statement.
Thank you to the League and also to the library for tonight. My name is Teresa Malidi and I am a product of the Columbia Public Schools. I'm very grateful for the education I received growing up here in Columbia. And I know this helped me prepare for college and a successful career in business. The next generation of students deserve the same benefits derived from an excellent education. Since I moved back to Columbia 23 years ago, I've personally put my support of the district into action by serving on several election committees supporting CPS bond issues and tax levies. Three years ago, I reached out to the community for community support when I decided to run for the Columbia Public School Board and broad community support helped to elect me. As we finally approach a return to full-time in-seat learning, my top three priorities are even more critically relevant. The first one is closing the achievement gap across all student demographics through equity in education and enrichment opportunities. Two, developing sound strategies to attract and retain our quality teachers. And three, ensuring that the district continues to earn the community's confidence, trust, and consistent financial support.
Thank you, Ms. Malidi. Now Luke Neal, you may present your opening statement.
Great. My name is Luke Neal and I grew up in Kansas City, Missouri and came to Columbia in 1999 to pursue a degree in secondary math education at Mizzou. I did my student teaching at Hickman. After college, I joined the staff of Young Life, an organization that I spent much time volunteering for while I was in college. I've been with Young Life since 2003. I've been married to my wife Amy since 2003. And she's a speech-language pathologist with Columbia Public Schools. We have two daughters, Nora and Agnes, who are in elementary school. And in addition to my work with Young Life, I also coached track at Hickman High School for 16 years. I have many strengths that I would bring to the board. One is that I have a solid perspective on the needs of our students. I've spent thousands of hours over my career working directly with students in our community. I will always put students first in my decision-making. Two, I'm a moderate voice that will bring stability to our community. Our community has been deeply impacted by the pandemic. We don't fully know the extent of the fallout of the last year. My guess is that it will be significant. And in light of this and with a new superintendent starting in July, our community needs a steady hand at the wheel. And that's what I'll bring to our community. Three, as a director of a nonprofit, I've spent my entire 17-plus-year career working with boards and budgets and moderating difficult conversations. I know how to hear all perspectives. I know how to find common ground. I don't come into this with an agenda other than providing a high-quality education to every student in our district. And I want to push our district to get back to the basics as we get back to a full in-seat return.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. Erin Saylor, you may present your opening statement.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Erin Saylor. I have lived in Columbia for about 15 years now. I moved here after I graduated from high school in Ashland, Southern Boone County High School there. So I'm a small-town guy. I lived in Hartsburg before. And community is a big deal to me. I was part of the volunteer fire department there. And then I just became a lifelong learner. I cleaned carpets for about 10 years in Columbia. And then I had children with my wife and they're expensive, so I had to go back to school. And I took a bachelor's, or I earned a Bachelor of Science in Computer Science. And so I'm a very logical thinker. I'm pro-education continually throughout your life. With my job now as a web developer, you have to continue to learn. Otherwise, you will get behind soon and you won't have a job very long. But based on my education and my logical thinking, I think I'm a good fit for the school board. And that's a little bit about me.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. And now Catherine Sasser, you may present your opening statement.
Thanks so much, Barbara. I'm Catherine Sasser. I use she and her pronouns. Education is my passion and it's my life's work. I've now spent 15 years as a professional in the field of education. The first nine years I spent as a teacher in Columbia Public Schools across middle school and high school. As a woman in this profession, I often looked around in my school buildings to notice that most teachers were women and most administrators were men. I understand at a deep level what it's like to have to fight for equal footing. I'm also a mom of three school-aged children. Two of them are at CPS currently and one will be in kindergarten next year. One of my children doesn't fit the norm. And in advocating for her, I've learned that the educational system can sometimes be harmful to some kids. That's because the status quo is not neutral. The racial status quo is not neutral. The gender status quo is not neutral. The disability rights status quo is not neutral. The economic status quo is not neutral. This is why we cannot afford at this moment to simply stay the course. We need to hear from impacted voices. We need to innovate. We need to evolve. And we have the resources at our disposal to do so. Our educators are excellent and committed. Our students are resilient and brave. Our families are creative and very invested. Our system can be dynamic for diverse needs. I've seen it in action. I can tell you from my personal experience that when a student has the chance to show up fully as herself, not only does she thrive, but the system thrives as well. For some of us, the system has always worked, which can make it hard for us to see where the gaps are. That's why it's critical to be in real conversation with our diverse community. I am a leader who can think creatively, who can lean into authentic conversation with the community, who can listen and can empower our district to support all kids. I can sit in tension and work with you to transform our schools together. As a teacher, I have years of profound knowledge of the needs of students, families, and staff. As an educational leader, mom and advocate, I am passionate about our schools and I'd appreciate your vote on April 6.
Thank you, Ms. Sasser. And now we go to Jeannie Snodgrass. You may present your opening statement.
Thank you so much. Thank you for having us. Oh, unmuted? Okay. Thank you for having us here and for hosting the forum. My name is Jean Snodgrass. I use she/her pronouns. Want to take this moment to just give you a little bit of background about who I am, my experience, and why I want to run. First of all, I'm a parent. I have three children in the CPS schools right now, at the elementary, middle school, and high school levels. I have extensive and ongoing experience as an educator. I worked in both traditional classrooms as well as non-traditional and experiential education. And a lot of my work has also involved working with students around controversial issues and difficult conversations. And I bring that experience with me as well. I'm a previous small-business owner. My husband and I owned a restaurant for five years in northeast Missouri, where we were involved in our local business community and have that experience to bring with me. And I'm currently a nonprofit executive director. I have experience working with boards, setting budgets, implementing programming, and navigating constituent tensions and where priorities are sometimes, don't always feel aligned. And most importantly, I'm a strong advocate for public schools. I believe in our public school system and the opportunities that it can provide for our students. Why I'm running? I really want us to continue to focus on openness and clear communication to our Columbia families around decisions and also around the opportunities that are available to them. I want to help to amplify some of the underrepresented and working parent voices. I want to be able to address issues of racial equity and inequity and make decisions that prioritize safety for our students, our teachers, and our staff and our whole community. And I want to work to help to build those connections and bridges between the school community and the broader community so that we can all work together to lift up our schools and our students.
Thank you, Ms. Snodgrass. And now we will go to the questions to the candidates and we will alternate who gets the question first. And we'll start in the ballot order again. So the first question will go to Teresa Malidi. And everyone will get the same question. So the first question is, "This last year has been a very challenging and difficult one for students, teachers, and parents in the Columbia Public School system. What important lessons and insights have you gained that will help to improve Columbia Public School education in the future?"
Sorry, didn't want to forget the mute button there. It has been a very difficult year in a lot of different ways. Challenging for the families and also the students and faculty, our educators, and also the staff with Columbia Public Schools. I think we did a lot of things right. We were able to meet the needs of most of our students. We were able to very quickly go to virtual learning. We were able to distribute 10,000 devices to students that didn't have iPads or laptops to begin with. We distributed 1,500 hotspots to help with internet connections. We established lunch grab-and-go sites so we could keep our students fed. The challenging part, or one of the challenges, was the changing information we received. We did work very closely with the local health guidelines. And we're able to, now with vaccines, lower rates, we're ready to get back in seat April 5.
Thank you. And now Luke Neal, would you please answer the question?
Yeah, three quick ones that come to mind. Number one, our teachers are amazing. To watch them so quickly and flexibly pivot to virtual learning this week, a year ago, was pretty awesome to watch. And I think moving forward is how can we continue to support them and help them to do the job that they were hired to do? Secondly, parent engagement for many of our students is at an all-time high. Parents were forced to be much more involved in their students' education. And my question is, how can we leverage that moving forward? How can we ride that wave? And then the third thing that comes to mind, one of the things that was made obvious in the last year is that some voices in our community are not being heard. And that's troubling. And I mean certain demographics, but I also mean certain stakeholders in our community. And so moving forward, one of the lessons learned is how do we continue to listen to all voices in an active way, which takes a lot of energy and takes a lot of creativity?
Thank you, Mr. Neal. And now we go to Erin Saylor.
Yeah, thanks. Some of the lessons I learned, it's, parents are educational coordinators during virtual learning. You help get your, well, especially for elementary schools, age, third-grade kindergarten. You have to set your kids up on time, get them ready, get them going, and switch the classes along with them. So that is one big learning experience I had there. But another one is how important transparency is. A lot of the decisions that were made didn't always get the message sent to the community in the most clear way. And things would change rather often. I understand things change, but the communication between it wasn't always as clear as I thought that it could have been.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. And now we go to Catherine Sasser.
Barbara, would you remind repeating the question one more time?
Sure. "This last year has been a very challenging and difficult one for students, teachers, and parents in the Columbia Public School system. What important lessons and insights have you gained that will help to improve Columbia Public School education in the future?"
Thank you. So the first lesson is, wow, we have a resilient community. One that will continue to show up. Parents that will show up for kids, students that will show up every day, teachers that will go above and beyond, a board who will hold multiple special sessions to try to figure out what's best. And so I think we have to hold that up. Even in a challenging time, we have to celebrate the ways that we're all showing up for each other. And I think that in this situation, there's been a lot of fracture and we need to recover that as a community. We need to get back to understanding that we're all here for the same reason. And that's because we all want what's best for kids. Sometimes we disagree about how that might look, but we all want what's best for our students. And I think that our lesson learned in this is how do we maintain community relationship and trust and transparency and honest conversation even when it's hard? I think we have to prioritize that. And I think we have to learn how to hold creative thinking, not get stuck in a binary either-or. I think that we can expand possibilities beyond just in-seat or out-of-seat and think through how can we leverage resources in the future to give even more options for student learning?
Thank you, Ms. Sasser. And now we go to Jeannie Snodgrass.
Thank you so much. I think like other candidates have mentioned, the first thing that comes to mind is just the way that so many in the community stepped up. Parents stepped up to help work with their kids. Teachers stepped up in a huge way. And we also had organizations in the community that stepped up to provide supervision and tutoring and things to students that needed it. And we also know that a lot of students got missed. And so I think as we go forward, we need to think about both the ways we can be flexible in how we evaluate students, in how we teach, in how we approach our teaching with our students, and also how do we use that flexibility to also have planned transitions? The communication is a really big piece. There's a lot of anxiety when people, adults and students and children, don't know what's happening next. And so how do we think about how we bring information in and how we share it with the community to make the best decisions for all of our students?
Thank you, Jeannie Snodgrass. Now we'll go to the second question and we'll start with Luke Neal for this one. And the question is, "For several years, teachers spent a great deal of their time preparing students to take state assessment tests. What is your view of the purpose of testing, frequency of tests, and type of tests for the Columbia Public School students?"
I do think that we need to be assessing students in some way. The question of whether or not the current tools that we're using are the best, I think should always be up for discussion. Assessment is important because it helps the board and the district set goals and set priorities. It's not the best tool because it is a one-size-fits-all, which doesn't work for all of our students for a variety of reasons. Many of our students maybe don't test as well. And it's not the best measure of every student's progress. So I think for, in terms of developing individual programs for student success, I don't think it's effective, but I do think that the current model is a great one, maybe not the best one, in order for the board to be able to set goals and for us to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. And now we go to Erin Saylor.
Yeah, I personally like tests because in my job, we benchmark everything from seeing how many people view a page to how much memory a server is using at certain times. Benchmarks are important so you know how to react and how to get more resources and where to move your resources and things like that. We can debate on the merits of the tests that they are currently taking. And I would like to pick the, or look at and find the best tests that show the best or have the best representation of the students' learning. But I think they're a good thing. I think they should happen. It shouldn't be study-for-the-test-type-of-class courses, but they do show us our benchmarks and where we can go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. And now we go to Catherine Sasser.
As a teacher in a classroom for nine years, I dealt with assessing students every day. Great teachers are constantly testing their students' knowledge and skills through formative moments or basically check-in moments where they're asking a question. So the testing and assessment of our students is actually happening effectively in classrooms all day long, every day. And we need to trust the data that our teachers are compiling and presenting to us as effective measures. I know as a teacher, I held the tension of, we have to prepare ourselves for these standardized tests. And I know that great learning looks like critical thinking and learning how to communicate and collaborate with others and learning the themes of history and being a good citizen. I believed and have proved through my experiences with students that when you teach the right things, when you teach at deep levels, when you teach students how to think for themselves, they will be okay on those standardized tests. I think we also have to address that standardized tests aren't always equitable. There are plenty of standardized tests that have biases against students that are of color. So we need to look at that with an equity lens as well.
Thank you, Ms. Sasser. And now we go to Jean Snodgrass.
Thank you. I would echo that tests are important. Testing and assessment is important in the sense that we want to have ways to measure that our students are learning and measure that they're improving. And also, we need to recognize that standardized tests in particular, as Catherine started to say, have biases that are in them, both gender, racial, and racial bias. And so we know that the testing isn't perfect. Our teachers are really good about incorporating different types of learning into their curriculum and into their assessments. I know for my children, they have some things that are hands-on. They have some that are written assignments. They have some that are multiple choice. I think that's really important to hold that is the way that our teachers are assessing our students and that we can also work with our students so that they understand the value of the standardized tests and also understand that it is not the only measure of their worth or their intelligence. Because we have amazing students and we have amazing teachers and we want them to continue to work hard and think about things critically.
Thank you, Ms. Snodgrass. Now we go to Teresa Malidi.
Thank you. As we've talked about, there's some standardized tests that were required to give our students and they are not perfect. I think there is some value in that we can learn year over year how our children are progressing and how we might compare to other districts. However, the assessments that the teachers are able to give on a daily basis, I think, are the best measure of how the student is learning and how the gaps probably need to be filled. The other thing that I believe with Columbia Public Schools shifting to standard reference grading, I think that will be beneficial for our students and will have a better idea of what the children are grasping and how we need to fill the gaps. And the last point I would make, it's going to be critical as we get back in-seat that we do carefully assess our students on an individual basis, meet them where they're at, and understand what type of acceleration we might need to do to have them back on track again.
Thank you, Ms. Malidi. Now we'll go to question three and we'll begin with Erin Saylor on this one and rotate through. And this is another specific question. "What steps should be made to integrate special education students into regular classrooms? And how has special education worked or not worked during the last year?" And we'll start with Erin Saylor.
Thanks. So I'm a small-town guy. We didn't have the resources that Columbia Public Schools had in Southern Boone County. So we would have special education classrooms inside the school, but the special education kids would also share other classrooms with everyone else. So we were all together. I like that because that's how society functions. That's how we do in society today. We see all types of people. So in order to get them in, I would like to see it. I know it's probably more cost-effective to put it in just one building, but I think it would help the community out to have everyone integrated. The, I'm trying to think of the second part and I forgot it. But I'll stop it there. I'm sorry.
Running out of time. Okay, thank you, Mr. Saylor. And now we go to Catherine Sasser.
So the more inclusive we can make our classroom spaces, the better. I've heard from multiple parents of students with disabilities about how challenging this year has been for them in particular, both due to the pandemic and through experiences they've had just trying to get information so they could best support their student. I believe that when we center the most critically impacted families like students with disabilities, everybody wins. So we can look to our pre-K model, which parents have held up as an exemplar of the way to do learning with students with disabilities. It's a peer-to-peer model in a classroom that's very inclusive. I want to get curious and I want to ask families, how can we apply that then across the elementary and secondary level? How can we center your children's experiences so they don't feel set aside? So they don't feel like they're in a hallway, but they're actually integral to classroom, the school culture, the school space, just as much as any other student or family? I think that if we do that work alongside families and community partners that are experts in this area, we can transform our special ed program to be innovative and supportive of our families.
Thank you, Catherine Sasser. And now we go to Jean Snodgrass.
Thank you. So I think it's really important to understand that for inclusive classrooms to be successful, they need to be fully supported. And what that means is that we need to be able to make resources available so that there are aids where there needs to be aids in the classroom so that the entire school, not just that classroom teacher, but the specials teachers, the administration of the building, everyone is aware of what's happening and is working together so that just like any other student in the classroom, a student with an IEP or a student with a particular disability or different ability has the opportunity to shine and to show what they're good at and what they can do. I think that it's difficult. It is easier sometimes to say, this student needs extra help. We're just going to put them in a different classroom. Or on the other end, this student is doing something that's more advanced and the teacher doesn't want to deal with it, not because they don't want to deal with it, but because they're busy and they have all these other kids, and to move them out. And true inclusive classrooms find ways to integrate it to let students, peers, work with each other and to be fully supported.
Thank you, Jean Snodgrass. And now we go to Teresa Malidi.
I'm going to kind of do it in a little bit reverse order. One thing I would mention about the time period during the COVID, during the pandemic, we did try very hard to bring back special ed students as early as possible. And we were fairly successful at that. We did have issues with quarantining in some cases. The other thing that it's important to remember is that when we talk about special education, there's quite a spectrum of needs with our children. So some can very easily have the special education support within the school building. Others might need more intense programs. And we've tried to build and design our new buildings with good special education rooms that would be able to accommodate that and handle the specialists. The other thing I would mention real quickly, as we are hiring a consultant that did a review on our secondary programs, that is now programs, that is now going to be looking also at our special ed program.
Thank you, Teresa Malidi. And now we go to Luke Neal for that question.
I was profoundly impacted by an experience I had in high school where as a junior and senior, I served as a peer model in an adapted PE class. Through those two years, I saw that what happened when you fully integrated special education students into a classroom, that it was really a win-win for everybody. I remember having to sit down with some of the special education students in the class and have difficult life conversations. And I had those conversations instead of our teacher, because the teacher knew that I was going to gain as much from that experience as the special education students. So I would love to see more of that happening in our school district, like other candidates have said. I know that's less efficient. I know that's more costly, but I think it's better. And I would say as far as virtual school during the pandemic, it was, it was not good for many of our special education students, just as it was not good for many of our students that are in more vulnerable populations.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. And now we, we're going to go to some chat questions and I see two at the moment. And we're going to start with Catherine Sasser. And the first one is, if you have children, do your children attend or have they attended Columbia Public Schools, or Columbia Public Schools? And we start with Catherine Sasser on that one.
Yep, I have three children. Two of my children are in elementary school, a third grader and a second grader, and they are currently enrolled at CPS. And then I have a third child who will be in kindergarten next year. He's very excited to join his siblings at school that he's been walking through the halls for years, but hasn't quite gotten into a classroom yet. So I'll have three kids at CPS next year.
Thank you, Catherine Sasser. And now we go to Jean Snodgrass.
Thank you. I also have three kids, three girls in the public school. They are in fourth, eighth, and 10th grade. So the various, the three levels right now, although I'm about to only have two different school schedules next year, which will be very exciting for the first time in a couple of years. And it's been a great experience. My children have had really amazing experiences. And also, we've had sometimes small issues, particularly in the transition from elementary to middle or middle to high school. And so part of my desire to kind of see additional communication is some of that internal communication and how we let parents know about opportunities for their children to make sure that everyone is getting access to the really amazing resources that our schools have to offer.
Thank you, Jean Snodgrass. And now we go to Teresa Malidi.
I currently have three children in school. I have two at Grant, a fifth grader and a third grader. And then I have a seventh grader at Jefferson Middle School. I'm unusual in that I also have three older children that are in their 30s and all of them for periods of their life attended Columbia Public Schools.
Thank you, Teresa Malidi. And now we go to Luke Neal.
Prior to this year, my kids were at Fairview. As many of you know, they are in private school this year. We made that decision in July when we were looking down the road and thinking that we may have an entire year of virtual school. And the stability that we needed just wasn't, wasn't there. So they are in private school this year. We're eager to get them back into CPS because we've had a great experience and are looking forward to returning to public school.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. And now to, for the final answer to that question, Aaron Saylor.
I have two children in elementary school. I have a third grader and a kindergartner. And I want to take a little bit of this time to thank all the kindergarten teachers out there because I don't know how you did Zoom. It looked like you were trying to bathe 12 cats at the same time. I don't know how that works, but God bless you all and thank you very much.
Thank you, Aaron Saylor. We'll go to another chat question, which is regarding charter schools. What is your position about charter schools? And we'll start with Jean Snodgrass on that one.
Hey, I think because of how charters are set up, that they can be in Missouri, it's a little bit problematic because there's not the same sort of public accountability, community accountability. And they don't have to follow this, all of the same guidelines as far as ensuring that every child is able to have access to that, those programs. What I would love to see is our state really fully funding our public schools. We have a lot of resources, we have a lot of opportunities, and we can do even more if we have full funding and support from our state to do that. And some of the things that people want charter schools for that they talk about, like the specialty schools, we actually have the ability to do and we do do within the Columbia Public School District. We have integrative art schools, we have STEAM schools. Those are all things that can happen within the public school system with that public accountability.
Thank you, Jean Snodgrass. And now we go to Teresa Malidi.
I would agree that the way the charter schools are structured within the state of Missouri, they are not sustainable. I have looked at the numbers and data for Kansas City and also some St. Louis schools. And it's very expensive and drains money away from the public schools. But it's also, in addition to the financial implication, it's very confusing for the parents and the flow through the different schools and how they make their selections. Also, it is, they're not accountable to the taxpayers, which has been mentioned. And the financially, some of them have been bad investments for the state of Missouri. And so we would need to not approach future charter schools in the same manner.
Thank you, Teresa Malidi. Now we go to Luke Neal.
Obviously, the, whether or not charter schools show up in Columbia, Missouri falls outside the authority of a local school board. That decision is made at the state level. So I would say that we need to be ready in the event that we do have to deal with charter schools in Columbia. We need to figure out the accountability piece and be ready to have a flexible financial model in the event that there's a loss of revenue.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. And now Aaron Saylor.
Right. So the charter schools, like Luke said, are kind of a higher level, the way, the way it's brought down to us. So as a school board member, if, if it happens, then you would have to deal with it at that time. But I, I would hope you could find a way that you could have the school board over the charter school if it, if it happens that way. I think we have mocap right now, which is a state thing that is kind of acting a little bit like a charter school where students can go and pick different courses right now. And that actually takes money from Columbia Public Schools. But they're also looking to teach some of those classes to bring in some of it. So they, it's kind of a double-edged sword in that way. Some things are nice for Columbia Public Schools if they can set up enough classes to teach on that. And then there's the detriment of some money coming out.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. And now we go to Catherine Sasser.
I'm a proponent of strong public schools. And as the legislation is currently written around charter school or voucher movement, it weakens our public schools and takes away the funding. So I'm opposed to any legislation or charter school movement that would weaken the funding in our public schools. I think another really important part of this conversation is the equity conversation. Historically, charter schools coach out underperforming or non-traditional or kids that don't show up like the norm because they aren't held to those standards of accountability around supporting in a fair way all students learning. They can coach kids out. And I think that that's problematic in terms of creating an inequitable system for our students and in our schools. And finally, just looking at the data, 17% of vouchers, charter schools outperform public schools. It's not a high number. They're not doing an amazing job in a way that our public schools can't, can't achieve. So I'm generally not supportive of an unaccountable, unaccountable charter school model.
Thank you, Catherine Sasser. And now we will be going to closing statements as it's 7:40, my goal for the end of the question session. And we're going to start in, we, we're going to go in reverse ballot order. So Jean Snodgrass, you may make your closing statement of one minute.
Mute, sorry. Thank you so much. Thank you for hosting the forum. Thank you for having us and the opportunity to address some of these issues. As someone who has worked in education, teaching preschool through college level in traditional and non-traditional classrooms, as someone who previously owned a small business, as a parent, as someone who currently works with a board and helps to prioritize budgets and work with constituent tensions, and as a really strong advocate for our public schools, I hope you'll consider voting for me on April 6. I really want to see our schools thrive. We have a lot of really great things that are happening and we can make it that much better. We can lift up all of our students. We can address issues of equity, communication, transparency, and we can build community so that we're all in it together and really helping our students.
Thank you, Jean Snodgrass. And now we will go to Catherine Sasser.
I'm a career-long educator. I got my start as a teacher in Columbia Public Schools and spent nine years teaching and getting my foundation of understanding of who I am as a professional and what the work I want to do in the world. If I'm elected to the board, I will be the only person sitting on the board with that teaching experience. None of the other candidates have it and no other current-serving members who are returning have that experience. And that teacher's perspective is, is critical, both for understanding a teacher's point of view, but our teachers are the closest to our greatest resources and most precious gifts, which are our students. And we need that voice on the board. I've also spent time in international education, both teaching and running programs. I currently direct a grant that supports over 30 rural schools where I run budget, program, and process in a team. I'm a mom, I'm an advocate, I am passionate about education, I'm passionate about our community, and I would appreciate your vote on April 6.
Thank you, Catherine Sasser. And now we go to Aaron Saylor.
Yeah, so I'm a lifelong learner and I, I know the value of education. It is, it has really changed my life, going from cleaning carpets to a web developer late in life. There's continual education is always key. Giving the best education you can is always, always the best for everyone to, to succeed. And communities like ours that invest in our education and in our schools are the best ones to live in. So I, I really like this school district. I'm invested in it. I'm a lifelong learner. I'm a logical thinker. I have an open mind. If you show me a study that goes against what I might be thinking and it turns out to be true, I will change my mind to that because that is the facts behind it. So that's how I make my decisions, based on data, facts, logic. Also, April 6, go out and vote. If you don't like me, please look into one of these other people here. You can find them on social medias and websites, stuff like that, and just be educated. That's the best, so.
Thank you, Aaron Saylor. And now we go to Luke Neal.
Great. Thank you again, Barbara and the League of Women Voters for tonight. If elected, I'll bring stability to our board, to our schools, to our community. I want to lift up all voices and make sure they're all heard in decision-making. I will put students first and I will advocate that we focus on recovery from the last year as a first priority.
Thank you, Luke Neal. And now final closing statement from Teresa Malidi.
Okay, thank you, Barbara, Lauren, and Sharon. In closing, I want to highlight again what I bring to the school board. I had almost 40 years in banking and for 16 years I served as a regional CEO for Commerce Bank. Because of that, I feel I'm a knowledgeable resource for the district as we deal with operations, leadership development, financial issues, including budgets, construction, and facility management. For the last two years, I've served as the Chair of the District's Finance Committee and Chair of the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee. I know I've made a difference in the first term on the school board, but I don't feel the job is finished. I believe it is my responsibility to continue to serve our students, our families, our teachers, and community as we collectively attempt to fast-track lost learning time and ensure rapid, rapid student achievement. Continuity and breadth of understanding are important under these circumstances. I also would like to say that the Columbia Public School system is an important factor in the quality of our life we enjoy here in central Missouri, and I ask for your vote in retaining me on the school board on April 6.
Thank you, Teresa Malidi. And thank you to all of the candidates for the school board, Columbia School Board, for participating in tonight's forum. I know you're very busy and we appreciate your interest and dedication in serving the Columbia Public Schools. Thank you. And now we will turn to the two states for the Missouri State Representative, District 45. We'll have a little minute here for the transition. I think, I think we're here. Let's see. We will now look at the candidates for the Missouri State Representative, District 45. This office is vacant since Kip Kendrick resigned. David Tyson Smith is the Democratic candidate and Glenn Nielsen is the Libertarian candidate. The format is the same as the earlier segment. Both candidates will have two minutes for opening statement. And then we'll have questions from the league as well as questions from chat that we have time to take. There'll be one minute to answer those questions. And then we will have a closing statement from each candidate of one minute. And we will have opening statements in ballot order. And I will again have cards to indicate when 10 seconds remains and then when time has ended. And we will start with ballot order, as I indicated before. So David Tyson Smith, you may present your opening statement.
Thank you. And I want to thank the lovely women voters for having me and Daniel Boone Regional Library. My name is David Tyson Smith. I grew up in Columbia, graduated from Hickman, graduated from University of Missouri. I grew up in public schools. I started a law firm in Columbia about 15 years ago, Smith &amp; Parnell. I've also was a leader in establishing the Citizens Police Review Board in the city of Columbia. And although I was proud to get that done, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done. I was appointed in 2017 to the Missouri Advisory Committee to the United States Commission on Civil Rights. And the commission advises the president and Congress on civil rights issues. We're in a crisis in the state of Missouri. Missouri is third in voter suppression laws nationwide. There's just numerous voter suppression laws that are cascading down that we really have to fight against that are going to, that are designed to stop people from voting. The majority has made it clear that they can keep people from voting, then they're going to win. So we need to fight against those voter suppression laws and do everything we can to do what we can and do our part because that's the real new battleground going forward. I grew up in public schools. We need to protect public schools. There are bills moving through right now that are going to strip funds away from public schools in favor of charter schools, and we need to get on top of that. Missouri is 46 nationwide as far as public school funding. So we need to get a handle on that, need to get a handle on that quickly. Medicaid expansion is a problem. We need to make sure that it's not underfunded. Missouri is 50th in the country as far as funding for public health. We have 70,000 frontline health workers that don't even have health insurance. So we need to tackle the Medicaid expansion issue and make sure it's properly funded. And we need to work on criminal justice reform. We need to season the momentum from the summer and make sure that we can move forward in the right way on those issues.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And now we'll go to Glenn Nielsen. You may make your opening statement.
Well, thank you. I'm Glenn Nielsen. I'm a Libertarian. I'd like to thank the Columbia Public Library and the League of Women Voters for hosting this candidate forum. As a Libertarian, I always appreciate the League of Women Voters and how fair and welcoming they are to all candidates on the ballot. So thank you. I'm running as a Libertarian. And to understand that, you need to understand the principles that guide libertarians for self-governance. And the first principle is that of the non-aggression principle. And that says that, that neither individuals or groups should use force, the threat of force, violence, theft, or fraud to get their way over other people. And the second principle is that of ownership of yourself, of your property right, of your, you own your own body. And not only that, but that extends to your personal possessions and to your real property. Regardless of what you want to do with your own body, as long as you don't violate the non-aggression principle. And third is free markets, that you should be free to conduct business in any way you want, whether you're an individual or a big corp- or a big corporation, as long as you don't violate the non-aggression principle, violate the rights of others. Now, why am I running? One of the reasons I'm running is because of the disruption of last year. The COVID-19, the disruption to everybody's lives and to business, you drive around Columbia, you see all these businesses that are for lease that have closed down. It's been a huge disruption, and some of it, I think, was unnecessary. Second, it's because of, there's finally momentum, as Mr. Smith said, for real criminal justice reform. And I agree with him that what has been proposed so far in Missouri is just the tip of the spear. You really need to, to, to look at the entire criminal justice system from top to bottom, not just police abuse, but we have to look at the courts, we have to look at bail reform, prison reform, sentencing reform, from top to bottom. So thank you all for having me here, and I look forward to this forum.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. We will now go to questions from the league and then questions from chat as we have time. And we will alternate which candidate, candidate goes first. And we'll start with, again, with David Tyson Smith. And the first question is, "The League of Women Voters has worked for many years to get more people to exercise their right and duty to vote. What will you do when you are in state, the state legislature to make sure that it is easier and more convenient for people to vote rather than more difficult and less convenient?"
You know, as, as I mentioned earlier, right now Missouri is third nationwide as far as voter suppression bills. There is an epidemic in this country to stop people from voting. This is a true problem. It's a new battlefront. There are bills moving through right now. H bill, House Bill, I believe it's 334, designed to make sure people provide identification. The majority knows that every additional step they can put in the way for people to vote is going to cause for there to be less turnout. We need to push back on all of these bills. That's not the only one. There's House Bill, it's 1065, which is designed to, as far as absentee, no-excuse voting. It's, it changed it from six-week, the six-week window down to three weeks. And there's another bill that's, it's doing basically the same thing. So we need to make sure that we push against these bills because the right to vote is very important, and we have to do everything we can to try to stop these bills that will keep people from voting.
Thank you, Mr. Smith and Mr. Nielsen.
Yes, back in 2003, I served on a special committee formed by Secretary of State Matt Blunt to make recommendations for implementing the Help America Vote Act. That is the act that Congress passed after the hanging Chad incidents of, in Florida in 2000. And one of the recommendations we made was that all voting equipment, if electronic, should have a paper trail that is verifiable by the voter, and that that is what is used for any recounts. Now, the problem, now with voting, what you have to do is you have to have a balance. You have to have a balance for enabling someone to have a franchise to vote, yet eliminating ways for people to commit fraud. You also have to have a balance between having votes that are anonymous, but also a vote that is, can be audited. With all that said, though, I think Winston Churchill said that democracy is the worst form of government, other than all the ones before. I think Libertarians would like to see us evolve beyond democracy, because democracy is two wolves and a sheep, depending on what's for dinner. In Missouri, the Democrats think the Republicans are the wolves, and federally, the Republicans think the Democrats are the wolves. Libertarians agree with both of them.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. And we'll go to question two, and this time, Mr. Nielsen will go first. And it's, the question is, "The use of gerrymandering to redraw voting districts in a way that dilutes the impact and the representation of certain voters is a serious problem in Missouri. What will you do to make sure that voting districts are drawn in a fair and impartial manner after the 2020 census? And how should that specifically be done?"
Well, those are, and those end up being political decisions. And really, what needs to be done, there's needs to be an algorithm to decide how that is done. By gosh, the computers and the internet is so sophisticated. Now, if you can't do that, if Google or somebody can't come up with an algorithm, you know, what the hell? But beyond that, the true power, the true problem is that there's too much power in the hands of people in government, and elected officials, and the bureaucrats. And so you'll end up with the fighting, you know, at all costs to try to gain that power, so that those that have the power can reward their friends and punish their enemies. You see that at the federal level, you see that at the state level. So the real problem is the amount of power that the federal bureaucrats, the state bureaucrats, and, and the elected officials have. The best thing to do is to reduce that power. As Lord Acton said, "The power corrupts, and absolute power corrupts, absolutely." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. And now David Tyson Smith.
Well, it's a power game, okay? And the majority wants to take as much power as possible. And I think we have to acknowledge that, and we have to recognize that. So we can't just sit back and let the process play out. We have to be vocal, and we have to make sure the constituents understand what's happening, because we're going to see a huge power grab by the majority party. And we have to fight. I mean, this is, this is critical, because Democrats are in the, in the super minority already, at least in the House. And so we have to push back against this, just like with every other bill. We have to have alliances with people who are going to listen, and that we can work with on the other side of the aisle to get things done. We cannot just sit back and theorize about this. This is going to be a huge problem if we don't get ahead of it. But with being in the minority party, unfortunately, we could be looking at 10 years of major problems, unless we can be vocal and fight. And we need people at the grassroots level to come out and be involved as well, and let their voices be heard.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And now we'll go to question three, the third question, and this will go first to David Tyson Smith. "Missouri voters approved Medicaid expansion in 2020. The Missouri State Legislature in 2021 may not fund Medicaid expansion. And there are bills to reduce the Missouri minimum wage that was passed by Missouri voters a few years ago. Do you believe the legislature knows better than the Missouri voters what is best for them, and should over, and should the legislature overrule their votes?"
Well, right now, specifically, when you talk about Medicaid expansion, the voters have decided, okay, they've decided that they want Medicaid expansion. There are, again, over 70,000 public healthcare workers that are not covered by, that don't have insurance. Missouri ranks 50th nationwide in funds going to public health. What's happening in Jefferson City is awful in regard to Medicaid expansion, because right now, they have removed the Medicaid expansion issue into an appropriations bill, designed to kill it, potentially. So it should be in the Medicaid expansion issue, as the voters wanted to have it, should be along with Medicaid, to be decided and funded. But the majority party is going to try to underfund it. And I said they've already moved it to a separate bill, hopefully, to, to kill it. So in this case, we need to make sure the voters can be heard, and that people can be, people can receive the healthcare that they need and deserve, that the citizens have decided on in the state.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And now, Mr. Nielsen.
Thank you. Regarding the minimum wage, there should be a free market for wages. That should be a contract and agreement between the employer and the employee. And oftentimes, there is more to, to work than just the remuneration you get in your wage. There is also the experience that you learn, the resume that you build. There are many positive things to work beyond just the wage that you are paid and the value you provide. Regarding Medicaid, I think the real problem is underscored by the excessive cost of healthcare. That is the real underlying problem. And Medicaid is just a Band-Aid that government tries to apply to that problem. So we need to address the problem with healthcare. And one of those things that you can address is eliminating the certificate of need. We need a real free market in healthcare. A certificate of need is a way for the big providers in healthcare to protect themselves from competition. And we also need to reduce regulations so we get more of a competition in our free market in healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. We'll go to question four, and then we'll take questions from chat. I believe we have two of those. "The Missouri Legislature passed measures to remove local county control that would keep confined animal feeding operations from moving into their county. The legislature also has a bill that would take away local control from county health officials to issue health, health orders. What is your position on these issues and on the state taking away county and city local control in general?"
Best for me?
Yes.
Thank you. Regarding CAFOs, the real problem is that government can pass laws and regulations that allow a certain level of pollution to their neighbors. So what we need is strict property rights, to where a confined animal farming operation cannot infringe on their neighbors, whether it's water runoff pollution, whether it's odor, whether it is noise. And if there's going to be a CAFO, they need to either have enough space for that, so that they're not bothering their neighbors or causing, infringing on their neighbors, or they need to get some kind of easement from the neighbor, where the neighbor is compensated for that. So the problem is that government is making these rules. You need strict property rights so that the neighbors can be protected from CAFOs, not just CAFOs, but any other operation that is going on next to them.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. And Mr. Smith?
We need local control here. We don't need the state legislature or state authorities telling us how to do it locally. That's a problem. It's a problem with health department, health departments. Our health departments need to make the decisions regarding vaccination distribution, regarding businesses, and whether they can stay open or not. We need to keep the state government out of this, especially in this situation where we have the majority party that is, is trying to assert our authority. It's hypocritical, because you see the majority party advocating local control and issues dealing with weapons, but not in this situation. Similarly with CAFOs, we need local control here for our environment. The citizens deserve that, and we need to keep the state out of the decision-making processes here in this area.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And now we'll take a, I see two questions in chat. One is, I assume this is for funding, for state funding. Do you support toll roads? And that will go to David Tyson Smith first.
Well, I think, really, I think the best way to raise revenue right now is the Wayfair fix regarding taxes on online shopping. I think if we're going to generate revenue, that's really the best way to do it. There is a gas tax that's being considered. I don't think it's terrible. It will raise taxes on, on, per gallon on gas to a little over 20 cents, and I think it's, it's spread out. I think it's two and a half cents a year till about 2025 or 2026. I think that's appropriate. I don't know that toll roads right now is exactly what we need. However, we do need money for infrastructure. I think the gas tax will generate over $400 million in taxes for roads and infrastructure. So I think that's primarily what I like to see, because we need that fixed, especially I-70 needs work.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And now we'll go to Glenn Nielsen.
I think if, where the state is going to be providing the road services, then I think the least, the best way to do that is through some sort of use tax, which is, which is the gasoline tax. But I think that if you look at the roads, especially, you know, I'm a little bit older, I'm 65, but it seems like the technology for roads really hasn't changed much in my lifetime. It seems that perhaps there are better ways to do things, and we're stuck in the same old rut of how we do roads. The cost per mile keeps going up and up and up and up. Perhaps there are more efficient ways to do things, to build roads, to repair them, ways to construct them to where they last longer and don't need constant maintenance. I'm open to, to exploring those ideas and maybe finding new ways of doing things, rather than the same old ways.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. And we have, we'll go, take one more question from chat, and then we'll go to closing statements. And then this one goes first to Mr. Nielsen. "Do you support voter ID?"
Yes, I think if you're going to vote, you need to provide an ID. That's a short answer.
Yeah. And I didn't specify photographs or what type of ID. I'll let, we'll go next to Mr. Smith. David Tyson.
We don't need, we don't need photo IDs for voting. We don't have a voting fraud problem in this country, and we don't have it in the state. This is designed to keep people from voting. This idea that, oh, you know, you bring in a photo ID. No. If we had a systemic fraud problem that would overturn an election, we would need measures like this. We don't have a problem like this. This idea that there's some type of massive voter fraud going on, and we need to implement new taxes, or, I mean, some things even amount to poll taxes. I mean, that, that could amount to a poll tax. If people don't have money to get a photo, photo ID, and they don't have one, now you've got a poll tax because the Missouri legislature doesn't want to pay for people to get it. So then you have to go down and pay whatever the $7 or $10 it is to get the photo ID. So now you're paying to vote. We do not need photo IDs in Missouri. It's just another way to suppress the vote.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. And now we will go to closing statements of one minute, and we'll go in reverse ballot order. So, Mr. Nielsen, you may present your closing statement.
Well, thank you for this forum. I've enjoyed it. It's been interesting to discuss the issues. Let me say that, you know, I've been in this community a long time. I've been active in Columbia. I've attended many city council meetings. I've spoken at city council meetings. One thing that really didn't come up in this was criminal justice reform, very much. And I am passionate about that issue, very passionate about that issue. There are many things we can do to, to increase our privacy, to, for harm reduction, to eliminate abuse. I just, I hope that we can grab, grab the iron while it's hot here and get something really done. I'm passionate about that issue. If you are passionate about that issue, please consider voting for me April 6. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. And now David Tyson Smith, you may present your closing statement.
We're in a crisis in Missouri on multiple fronts, human rights, voter suppression. Now is the time we have to push back on all of these bad bills. As I mentioned before, Missouri is third in the nation as far as voter suppression bills. We have to fight against these bills, voter ID bills, requiring photo IDs. There's bills requiring paper ballots. We need to push back against these voter suppression laws. And this is not something we need to do now. This needs to be a long-term plan, because we're on a precipice in this state, where the majority knows they can't win unless they keep people from voting. They don't want everyone to vote. We need to make sure that everybody votes, and they're not subtle about it. They're blatant about it. Secondly, criminal justice reform. This is something that we need to get on top of. We need to seize the momentum. You know, I spoke at a rally this summer, the NAACP rally after the killing of George Floyd. And I think the sentiment there is the same sentiment. We need to do what's necessary to continue this momentum going forward, so we can protect everyone's rights.
Thank you. Thank you very much, David Tyson Smith and Glenn Nielsen, for also participating in our forum tonight, as well as the candidates for the Columbia Public School Board. I want to mention that the League of Women Voter, Voters has a digital voter's guide that is available on our website at l w v c b c dot org, with additional questions from all the candidates for this April election. And this forum has been recorded and will be available from the public, Columbia Public Library in a few days. I want to thank Lauren Williams and the Public Columbia Public Library for managing this event and co-sponsoring it with us. And I encourage everyone to please vote on April 6 for the candidate of your choice. And good night. Thank you very much.